Hi there, welcome. My name is Eric Halden, I'm the managing editor of the Kaiser Times newspaper. I've invited city councillor Laura Reed and Mike de Blasie, who is running against her for position one on the Kaiser City Council, to join me for just a discussion, to talk about the issues that are affecting Kaiser, what they see as a way forward, what issues are important to them. So, without any further ado, believe, agree and introduction, I'm going to introduce Laura Reed, our current city councillor in the city council position one, and Mike de Blasie.
Hello.
Thank you both for being here. And I want to get started just by giving you guys a chance to introduce yourselves to the people who are going to be listening to this. So if you could start by telling us what your day job is, a little bit about your passions, and what's led you to this point that you want to serve the community on the city council?
Laura, you can go first.
Sorry, I should have picked one earlier than this.
Sorry, I should probably anchor my phone a little better, but I don't, so I'm holding it. So I am Laura Reed, and I have been an English teacher at McNary for the past nineteen years. This is my twentieth year going into this. And so we've lived here that long, and I am also part of the Kaiser Homegrown Theater Board and the Kaiser Heritage Board. And yes, that's basically my day job and some of the things I do.
What led you to want to run the city council, Laura?
Well, Kaiser was, you know, I've lived a lot of different places, grew up in the Bay Area, lived in Corvallis for nine years and so forth. But Kaiser was the first place that really actively felt like a home. It felt like a real community, and I really loved that about Kaiser. And I wanted to get to know it from a different perspective. And so I've always, you know, community service has always been an important part of my life. And so I wanted to get to know Kaiser from the inside and be able to see some of the inner workings and see in what ways I could serve. And so that's what led me to run the first time. The second time, first of all, learned that there's a whole lot to learn about the city and the inner workings, and it can be a very complicated business at times. And so I'm feeling like now I know a lot more than I did certainly initially, and I'm eager to see where we can go from here and to continue to work to become better and to strengthen the things that are already going well.
Thank you very much. How about you, Mike? Tell us a little bit about you.
Sure. So I currently work for the state of Oregon with the Department of State Lands, so I work in natural resources. I've been a resident of Kaiser since 2012, and we moved up here from Southern Oregon. I have a wife and two children, one, my wife, she works at McNary, and my children go to Gupsor. You know, I've lived in a lot of places as well, I even lived in the Bay Area for a short while. But most places I've lived in were either not long enough to live there to feel like I could be part of a change, or too big to be part of a change. And so moving to Kaiser, getting to know the city and the people, I decided I wanted to dip my toe into volunteering. So I went first for a planning commission and then expanded from there. And the reason why I chose to move on to getting onto the city council is because I felt like, you know, while it's great to be on those commissions and committees, the ultimate decisions are made by the council. And I felt like if I'm really gonna help make a change, I should strive for the council.
All right. Continuing down that road a little bit, I'm curious, and I've never asked anybody this question before, so I don't know how it's gonna go, we're gonna see. I'm curious if you could tell us a little bit about each of your lived experiences in Kaiser. And I'm talking about the day-to-day interactions, what do you see that you like? What do you see that you feel can be improved? What do you, what do you feel that we're struggling? And I'm gonna let Laura go first on this one again, and I'm just curious to see where it takes us tonight.
Well, I think there are as many day-to-day experiences as there are individuals. You know, everybody has his or her own way of experiencing Kaiser. I see, you know, I'm out walking quite a lot in my neighborhood, and, you know, I see people enjoying the outside and then the, just the camaraderie of just passing people that are also out for a walk. And yet I also see my students, and I know that that can be a very different experience for them. You know, my students have all kinds of ranges of experiences. And especially being an English teacher, I get to hear a lot of those firsthand because they write about them, because it's part of who they are, and that's what they know about. And so that's how we learn to write, is writing about what you know about and care about. So I get a real inside view of that, and I definitely see that life is not pleasant for a lot of people. And it's for a lot of reasons. Sometimes housing is inadequate, or sometimes parents are inadequate, honestly. And, you know, the ones that are really ahead of the game is those who have involved parents, and that crosses all kinds of spectrums. But that's a big part of what makes a kid's childhood and experience is how how safe they feel. And that safety can look a lot of different ways, whether it's feeling safe to be who they are even in their families, that can be a big part of it, or just to be safe in a more physical sense, and to just make sure that we have an environment where people can build the kinds of lives that they want. And people want different lives, but I think in Kaiser, they want to be able to live their lives, they want to be able to make their own worlds insofar as they can. And I think that Kaiser is a good place to do that, it's comfortable. Certainly, we have a ways to go in making sure that everybody's experiences is as positive as mine has been, for sure. But I think that we, you know, the pride spirit and volunteerism is a way of life in Kaiser. And, you know, it's a thrilling thing to be able to show up to civic center cleanups or rotary tree plantings or whatever, and see these kids involved. And, you know, it starts, not only middle school, it gets intense in middle school, but even, you know, the littler kids that come along with their parents to these things, and just to be able to experience what it means to build Kaiser from the inside to be what we want it to be. And so, again, the day-to-day experiences can vary pretty widely, but I think that we have an excellent place for most people to make the kinds of lives that they want to make.
All right, thank you. How about you, Mike?
Well, you know, I feel like Kaiser, while it has its uniqueness to it, it's also very much like a lot of other places. You know, we moved here, and when we moved up here, we were renting for a while, so we had to deal with the, how can we find a place that we feel safe in and is comfortable and affordable? Fortunately, we were able to find that. And then, when we decided, okay, I think we're ready to buy a house, can we find a place that is, again, comfortable, affordable, and a place that we could see raising our family in? So I think a lot of people in town still struggle with that, especially newcomers who are trying to set roots here. And of course, the folks that might be on the lower rungs of the economic ladder struggle to find housing. You know, I enjoy when I go out to local stores and restaurants and seeing people that I know and recognize and talking to them. I enjoy walking around town or biking around town and seeing people and meeting and talking with them. The one thing I wish we had more of in this community would be more of just that, just general day-to-day happenstance of bumping into each other. Because Kaiser is, for lack of a better word, a bedroom community, because we still have so many people that have to leave to go to work, and so many people, you know, have to drive around, we miss that day-to-day interaction. And I wish we had more of that. And echoing what Laura was saying, you know, my wife, I hear the general stories of the kids' experiences at McNary. I know some from my own kids, and there are some kids who do struggle with either a home life that is not as safe and secure, or just a general economic struggles. And so, you know, we have a very diverse group of people that live in this town, and I think that's great, both economically and culturally. I just hope that we can keep working on making everyone feel welcome and giving everyone the opportunity to stay here and grow a life here.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on to a little more brass tacks sort of thing when it comes down to Kaiser. And I've lived here in this area going on about twenty years now. And whenever I tell anybody I'm from Kaiser, I work for the Kaiser Times, everybody has their story they want to tell me about how Kaiser came to be. And I've heard it described as everything from a tax dodge to, you know, a quest for water rights, which makes us sound like Chinatown, which I kind of dig. But that's kind of beside the point of this question. Regardless of that, how we set up this town, how the town was established, has kind of dictated a very tight purse string when it comes to the city budget. And in recent years, we've added fees to help bolster services like police and parks. Do you see that is continuing to be the way Kaiser has to deal with budget constraints? Or are there alternatives out there you think the city could or should consider? And I'll go with Mike on this one.
Okay. Sure. So yeah, we are very tightly constrained financially for the city. And I think it does go back to the founding of the city. We were founded at a time with the country, even though we were in a pretty bad recession or coming out of one, we still had that mindset of one suburban expansion, but also it was starting to use that limited government, like you saw the tax resolution that passed in California and even later here, where they're trying to restrain the, I guess, the purse of our city. And we struggle with that now. You know, unfortunately, right now, fees and licenses and all those other things are the ways we get, we can raise extra money. I think it's been good for our parks and our police. But while I think people should pay for what they use, I don't think it's fair always because it's a blanket fee and it's not indexed to, say, your property value or your income. But ultimately, you know, so we have a choice of either property tax increase, which is, ours is super low, I've seen the numbers compared to comparative cities, and ours is low, even some very conservative cities, amazingly. So it's not just a liberal-conservative thing. So the alternative to raising taxes and fees then is to squeeze out as much revenue per developed acre as we can. And that's why I support increased density and keeping as much infill and getting as much infill as we can.
How about you, Laura?
Again, it is a challenge, you know, and every year we face this at budget meeting, you know, the $2.08 per thousand that people pay for property taxes in Kaiser versus the $4.01 something that they're paying in Salem, which is more of the state average, is definitely a challenge. And that's one thing, too, that I've really come to appreciate, is civilization is expensive. You know, it's expensive to have flushing toilets and the infrastructure that supports that. And just as one example, and, you know, people don't really realize that, that the local government is in the business of doing things that nobody else can make a profit at. And so we have to be able to be smart about that, and we have to be efficient about that. So one of the things that came up even just last night at the work session was that we can continue to look at our staffing and see how things evolve. For example, you know, we used to be just paper billing for water, and now a lot more people are doing online. And so that kind of shifts our staffing needs a little bit, and that's just one example. And, you know, just to kind of look at things and, you know, kind of realize that if we want to put our, you know, if something comes to be a need, because that's what the people of Kaiser are wanting, then something else is gonna have to diminish. You know, our budget is a finite thing, and we need to be able to manage it well. But we also have to be very, very careful in how we do that. Because again, you know, it's, people generally don't understand that, you know, again, civilization is expensive. And, you know, everybody wants services, everybody wants, you know, the best that the city can provide. And we've done that in a lot of interesting ways. Another example is for HR, we have a total of two people on our HR staff who manage the HR for a city staff of over a hundred. And that is an overwhelming task, and many of our positions are equally, I'm gonna say overwhelmed, but challenged, I think is a better word, because our people certainly rise to that challenge and do amazing things with, and they're very creative about it, too. So anyway, we recently were able to procure a software, an HR software program with part of our security system, actually, that was able to really take up some of that slack. So we can be innovative in fulfilling some of our staffing needs through technology, perhaps. Through, you know, another example is how we sort of reallocated a police position recently to be able to cover a few different things. So just kind of looking at every time we have an opportunity to be able to make the most of it. And so, you know, I think we have to be careful of how we grow and how we develop, because, you know, we want to be able to maintain the spirit of Kaiser, the feel of Kaiser. And yet we also definitely have some growth mandates that we have to be able to accommodate that the state is giving us. So it's complicated business, things like the police and parks fee is one innovative way. I don't see that as a slippery slope necessarily. You know, it's worked really well for police and parks, and we have to continually look at that as a council to make sure that those levels of funding are what they need them to be, and maybe we can drop them or raise them, you know, as we need to. But I think that is one innovative way to meet some of our needs.
All right. So Mike, I'm gonna go back to you on this question, and I'm gonna ask you to not necessarily respond to something that Laura said, but it's a topic that she brought up, and that is city staffing. The mayor Kathy Clark has talked, especially in the last year and a half or so, about city staffing levels, what's necessary to keep the city moving in the right, and, you know, to keep the city at status quo, even nobody likes that, no, nobody likes that word anymore. What, and how, like, where the pinch points are? You know, that there's things that, and services, and we'll get to some of this later, but just to take, for example, like a code enforcement officer, that's been something that's been on in the city talks a couple of times. You know, where do you see city staffing from your actions, from your, you know, either as a resident and/or as a committee member who's interacting with city staff as you try to get things done?
Well, I'd say as a resident, I guess I've been fortunate to have minimal interaction with the city. And, you know, not that they're bad folks, it's just I haven't had problems to deal with, so. So it's a little bit of interaction I've had with them as a private citizen has been, has been great. But, you know, I have seen them working with the committee, the planning commission, and I know that Nate and Shane are very overworked. You know, I was looking at a chart, and we have, just like Laura said, just over a hundred. Grants Pass, which is about a comparable-sized city, has almost 140 more than we do. I'm not saying we need to jump up that much, but we certainly, I think for the health and welfare of our own staff, we should have more people. As a state employee, we had persistently, have persistently asked for more staff. And, you know, we have these metrics that we're getting our work done. And the unfortunate, I guess, result of doing more with less is, then when you ask for more people, you're told, well, you're doing the work, so why do you need more people? So I guess we're all, and teachers are the same way, you're kind of punished for being good at your job. But I do think that we do need more staff.
Is there any particular aspect of it, like, from the interactions you've had that you would like to see?
Well, I think more code enforcement, for sure. I know there are issues where people are letting their homes be fallen disrepair, and that affects the overall community. There's the planning staff that is overwhelmed with, especially in the good years, when people are coming in and wanting to do development. I imagine public works has worked pretty hard, too. And so I would like to see, one, I don't want to see outsourcing. I think outsourcing never ends up being a good deal. I think it ends up being, you get less service for maybe less money, but in the end, it's not a positive, so.
How about you, Laura? You've been involved with some of the staffing discussions, like, what have you seen or heard that you've, that you've taken note of or put down on a, you know, a to-do list for yourself as a councillor?
One of our, one of our real needs is the legal department. You know, we have one full-time city attorney and one legal assistant, and they, and certain things come up, like the shootings in West Kaiser, you know, from across the river, and that took up a whole lot of time. And so, you know, and then there was the hacking, and, you know, that took up a lot of time. And that's in addition to the overall day-to-day business, which also takes up a lot of time. And, you know, so as Mike alluded to, you know, the developers coming in and so forth, you know, those often have legal ramifications that we need to be able to sort through. And so that's one area that we really could use more staffing in. Our, it's been interesting through this COVID experience to be able to see some opportunities to work more efficiently, whether it's, you know, working from home or just kind of being more efficient with our time and resources and so forth. The public works, people went on a different schedule that, you know, nobody was crazy about, but it worked. And, you know, so there's, this has given us a kind of an opportunity to rethink things a bit, and to be able to, you know, and the master plans that we have and so forth, I mean, I'm thinking more along the lines of public works, you know, we have a good plan to be able to attack these various projects in a systematic sort of way so that we're not spending a whole bunch all at once. And so I think that that planning, you know, that planned spending is an important part of what we do. And, you know, that's an important part of, you know, a council, we often are dealing with master plan amendments for this, that, or the other thing, and, you know, which makes sense. I mean, you can't plan for everything, the master plan covers ten years, and who knows what things, you know, look like in a ten-year timeframe? So that's, you know, that's one of the functions of the city council, is to kind of make those adjustments as necessary. So, you know, I think that we do a really good job, there's always ways to relook at things and be more efficient. But, you know, it's about building on our strengths. You know, we, for instance, have a DHS worker within the police department, which is a huge benefit as far as getting people the services they need from a law enforcement perspective, from a public safety perspective, I think is a better term, actually. Knowing that, you know, people are in crisis for a lot of different reasons, and that often becomes the purview of the police, even though they may, you know, they, that's not what police have traditionally been, is the frontline social workers. But, you know, the reality is that is one of the roles they often play. So to be able to have a DHS worker in-house at the police department has really helped us be able to get a lot of efficiency in services to people. So, you know, whether it's looking at, you know, I mentioned before, job descriptions to fit evolving needs, you know, as they become available, or whatever else needs to be done, we just need to be able to look for those opportunities. So I don't know, and I would probably say that nobody on the city staff would think that we ever have a sort of business-as-usual mentality. We are always looking at ways to be more efficient, to evolve. And, you know, our HR department is wonderful at looking out for people's needs. You know, we are very aware the burnout is a big risk, you know, for what we're asking our people to do. And so they're very proactive in taking care of our employees from many different perspectives.
All right, thank you. So, Mike, I'm gonna go back to you on this question. If you need me to reread this one, it's fine, I'm gonna warn you, it's a little bit of a mouthful, but it's not my fault. So the city has an adopted mission statement, and it reads, "Keep city government costs and services to a minimum by providing city services to the community in a coordinated, efficient, and least-cost fashion." But, as we all know, Kaiser's changed a lot since 1983. Do you think that it's time to have a new conversation about what the mission statement of the city should be in this day and age?
I do, you know, I suppose at the core of that statement, you know, it's not wrong, you don't want to have a government that's, you know, some bloated Tammany Hall sort of situation. But you also, yeah, we're not there yet, but we also don't want to have a government that is running so lean that we've cut all the fat and the muscle, and now we're scraping bone. You know, I think we need to understand that we're in a different century, different needs. I mean, we look at 2020, all the crazy needs that have arisen that no one was expecting, certainly not in 1983. So there's costs, and there's people here that live here that didn't live here, that was it, almost forty years ago. And they have different desires and different expectations. So the government should be funded in a way that can provide the services that people ask for and are willing to pay for, but do it in an efficient and cost-effective way.
How about you on that same question, Laura? And I can, I would gladly reread you the mission, if you'd like me to do.
No, I think, you know, first of all, I think it's healthy for, you know, for every organization to periodically look at its mission statement, because times evolve, needs evolve. And, you know, I agree with Mike in that, you know, we need to be able to look at what we're doing continually to make sure that we are providing what people need. You know, just in the last ten years, we've grown something like sixteen percent, and, you know, we need to provide services for all of those people. Maybe it's only seven percent, I'm not entirely sure on that statistic, but we've grown a lot, and we haven't, you know, we haven't had a commensurate rise in city services. So that's, sorry, something weird is happening. So, anyway, so we need to be continually looking at our mission statement and seeing how we do business. And again, we have some excellent people on the city staff, both in management positions and in all, at all levels. And they're creative, they know what they need to get their jobs done, whether it's, you know, investing in some new technology, or whether it's trying things a different way. So, you know, I think that input is valued. And again, you know, it's an excellent resource that we have, is to, and I think we should rely on their expertise.
All right. So we're gonna move into the topic of growth for the next few minutes, and I'm going into a better job switching back and forth between you two and telling you which one is going to answer from here on out. So Laura, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have you go first on this one, since you were just speaking on the issue. So getting to growth in Kaiser, this has been a continuing issue for the city for several years now. There's been lots of studies and lots of time and effort on city staff, on city council, on city committees, part of looking at this issue through a variety of different lenses. How do you think the process has gone so far, and where do you think or hope that we're heading?
It has been quite an involved process, and I've been part of a lot of these studies. And I appreciate that we are approaching it from a very careful sort of data-driven and yet also Kaiser-driven lens. You know, we are looking at a variety of perspectives. I think that in the last round of studies with the consultants, that we did an excellent job of purposefully targeting people to bring to the table to hear their perspectives. Because we don't, no one person can say what's good for everybody. And so it's important to be able to target those conversations to have the foresight to anticipate what groups of people are going to need to weigh in on those conversations, and then be able to respect their views. And so, you know, as this process evolves, and I know it was perhaps a little, I'm gonna say disheartening for some people, that not a whole lot of action items necessarily came out of the last round of studies, but it was excellent information that we need to be able to move forward. This takes a long time to be able to process this information, it takes a long time to be able to figure out how we want to grow. And so I think that one of the most important things that came out of, you know, and we adopted the findings of the study after, and my- and Mike did this too, from the planning perspective, planning commission perspective. You know, we adopted the recommendations. What does that mean exactly? Well, the, probably the most practical application that came out of that was more flexibility in our zoning. So the River Road and Cherry overlay corridors, we have now just basically mixed use instead of all the, we had about four or five different kinds of zoning. And so that is what I am in favor for, especially at this point, is just optimum flexibility. A lot of this is market driven and, you know, the city may or may not have a whole lot of control over that. I don't think it's a good idea to force a lot of these issues to force something that is not necessarily a good fit. I know that that was another frustration when we looked at comparable cities, it was to be able to say, okay, yeah, it worked for there, but that's not Kaiser. And, you know, a lot of people took issue with, you know, you can't compare this to Kaiser, but, you know, we use comparable cities in a lot of decision making. And so it's good information, but we also have to be able to take that information and make it our own and do things our own way. So, you know, bottom line for me is, you know, I'm still listening to a variety of perspectives. I have not made up my mind over, you know, exactly how I think things should go. But for right now, I think that ultimate, that optimum flexibility is our best shot for being able to figure this out.
How about you, Mike? Where do you think we're headed or where do you hope to go?
Well, you know, I, I'll say from the get go that I'm not in favor of expanding the UGB anytime soon.
UGB is the urban growth boundary just for our new viewers who are new to the issue. In the sidebar, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew the term, so.
No, you're right. I should try not to do too much. Kaiser's growing. There's even, there's a lot of people that say, you know, pull the drawbridge up now already. There's too many people. And, you know, people say that now, but I'll bet you if you asked people in Kaiser in 1990, they'd say the same thing. And that would mean all the people who moved in here since 1990 wouldn't have been here. So I think we can welcome new people to Kaiser and provide the housing diversity for people of all who have different either economic needs or just lifestyle needs. I think we should be trying to maximize that opportunity for people. Like I said, I'm against the urban growth boundary expansion because I don't see that as an economically sound way of growing. And for all the people who say they don't want Kaiser to grow, really what they're saying is we don't want River Road to turn into South Commercial or Lancaster or something like that. You don't want to lose our sense of community. And I get that, too. But we can grow in a way that actually fosters more neighborhood connections. And we'll still be Kaiser, we'll still be residents of the city. And barring getting a new high school, we'll still have only one high school where everyone ends up going to. But you'll still maybe feel more connection to your, in my case, Gubser neighborhood or Clear Lake or West Kaiser. You know, you just feel more part of that while living in the bigger city. So I think if we start looking at how we can get more housing diversity, we can accommodate the growth and try and minimize the negatives from that growth.
All right. So on that same issue of growth, but kind of viewing it from a different angle. Even if we increase density, even if we grow an urban growth boundary, one of the things that Kaiser is going to have to look at again and again is going to be infrastructure. Mike, I'm going to go with you on this one again. You have a second to swallow before I get to the question, though. The, you know, whatever that change is, however, however it surfaces or presents itself, it's going to require a different look at infrastructure in the city. And I'm thinking strictly in terms of deficits of sidewalks and streetlights and just traffic mitigation for, you know, if we are allowing greater density as the state seems like it's going to, you know, be pushing for. All of these things are going to need to kind of be rethought within the city boundaries that we have now. How would you prioritize those issues and what would you what would you hope to accomplish first? And how do you see that leading to other improvements?
Yeah. Well, obviously I've indicated that I'm a fan of increasing density. So that means it's going to take the system that we have and put more pressure on it rather than laying more miles of pipe at the edge or more asphalt down. I think we first, and Public Works should answer this better than I can, but determine how much capacity we have within our existing infrastructure, be it pipes, digital lines, all those sorts of things. As for sidewalks, I think we're dealing with the repercussions of a city that kept growing and absorbing community level stuff without accommodating the growth internally. So we have all these sidewalk gaps. And I think that's something that I know there was a house fire that they rebuilt the home just on the south of City Hall. And the city didn't require building a sidewalk there. And I feel like we need to change our code that says anytime you're building a new structure, even if it's a replacement structure, sidewalk has to go in. As for traffic mitigation, you know, I think, and I've bashed on engineers many times in my life because engineers like to look at numbers. And they have their books and they plug their numbers and it spits out an answer without any context for where these, these numbers live. So when we look at, say, increased development in Kaiser, we have a traffic engineer that says, okay, well, we expect this type, if you're going to build this kind of development, you're going to have this much traffic. So that means we're going to have to add another road here or another lane or another turning lane. I, the way I want to do it is flip that and say, okay, we want this kind of development. We want you to figure out how you will not increase the traffic load on our streets. Put in all the measures that you can. And then if there's a traffic increase, we'll accommodate it. But not just automatically say, hey, okay, Mr. Developer or Miss Developer, you're going to build here and it's going to create this kind of traffic level. And so here we are, we're going to come in and maybe tear out a sidewalk or something that makes the road now a five lane across, which makes it unfriendly to to people who are trying to walk.
All right. So how about you, Laura? What would you prioritize as far as infrastructure and how would you hope to go about doing it?
Well, interestingly, Kathy Clark has, Mary Clark has kind of brought up the question of things like sidewalks and streetlights as an equity issue and a way to reduce disparity amongst, in some of our neighborhoods. And so I think there's a real opportunity. It's a very complicated question as far as how we fund things. We definitely have to do things a lot differently. But if we could do that in such a way that, that we can make our infrastructure more equitable, I think that that would definitely be a good thing. Again, we have to be creative about this. And so, you know, to be able to start that work and, you know, yes, it would require changing policies and procedures and all of those other things, but I think that that is a real opportunity. Because we have to understand the infrastructure is really about people. It's about quality of life. It's about safety. It's about, it's about, it's about people. And so to be able to build from that perspective, I think is really important. And to be able to look at, again, some laws or policies that are archaic and update those. I think that that is always a worthwhile endeavor to do. But I think that that would, one of the, one of the issues that came up in our discussions about equity is things like ADA requirements, for example. ADA, the Whole Americans with Disabilities Act was put into place for a very, very small percentage of people. And yet those people desperately needed those accommodations in order to function in society. And by following those policies and procedures that the ADA put forth, it benefits everybody, whether you're pushing a stroller or, you know, just walking along the street and things are, if something's good for a wheelchair, it's good for everyone, pretty much. And so that's an example of the kind of model that we should be following as far as understanding that, you know, by making these accommodations of sidewalks or streetlights or whatever, yeah, it might not be in your neighborhood, but it makes for a better Kaiser on the whole. And I think that that is the way to look at it.
All right. So we're going to be bouncing around from topic to topic on the next several questions. It's because I'm trying to cover a lot of ground. But Laura, I'm going to go with you on this one first. What should a city councillor's role be in fostering businesses within the community?
Well, okay, so that's one of those things that that's one of those things that is often a huge misunderstanding. You know, it's not really the city's place to recruit businesses. We do that through more regional efforts through the, I'm going to say SEDCor and then promptly forget what that stands for, but it has to do with regional economic development. That's the EV in there. And, and we have to work with, with kind of the regional efforts of that and be able to work as a partner in cooperation for those efforts. Having said that, however, things like our Chamber of Commerce, our Latino Business Alliances, those groups focusing on the small business, I, it's really important to be able to work in partnership with them. Because the city council has worked in partnership with, let's say, you know, as an example, the Chamber of Commerce to do things like the Kaiser Fest, to do things like the Christmas Parade. And, you know, other service organizations, you know, like Rotary and other things. We work in partnerships with those kinds of organizations to further the communal interest. And so, you know, what's good for small business in Kaiser is good for everybody. So it's a cooperative effort.
How about you, Mike? Fostering businesses in the community and the city council's role in that or not?
Right. Well, yeah, ultimately it's a business's decision to open up or come here. We can only do so much and I'm not a fan of subsidies. But what I do support very much so is local and small business. And I would like to see more of an entrepreneurial growth in the city. And the problem is if we are following the typical development pattern, the costs, the upfront costs of a business are very high when you need to find a space and hope it's, it's big enough for you to be in, but not so big that you are dumping a whole lot of money. So I'd like to see more of a, they have something kind of like this over off of Hyacinth, and I think it's 45th. There's a, over in Salem. And then two off of, I believe it's, I think it's off of Lancaster where it meets Portland Road. They have these, basically, it's almost like incubators for small businesses to have a space to work and get their feet under them and develop their business model before they can start looking at bigger, bigger spaces. So having that diversity of business building sizes and a much more adaptable building type here rather than you plop your block down in the middle of that asphalt parking lot and I've said this before, now this bank looks like a pizza shop when, because that's what it used to be, rather than a traditional style building that could be anything. And again, I don't, if, if big business, large multinational or multi-state businesses want to come to Kaiser, I think that's great. We'll put out the red carpet for them. But I would expect them that when they come to us, they want to be here because they want to be here and not just because we're the cheapest place to be.
All right. So both of you were in the room last night for a very kind of full throated discussion about inclusivity and equity in Kaiser. And I'm curious, as in your roles that you have in the community, what's, what's specific issues do you want to see addressed as far as equity and inclusion go in the city, if any? I'm sorry, Laura. I see I did, you know.
Well, and I think that was a wonderfully productive conversation last night. Equity inclusion discussions can be really vitriolic. They can really be unproductive just because people are reacting rather than actually listening. And I am confident that our city leaders can listen. We represent, you know, on the council, we represent a wide variety of perspectives in terms of our professional lives and so forth. And it's also important to keep in mind in those discussions, things that cities can control and things they can't control. And, you know, so I think that we did a good job of focusing on that, some sort of being able to look at issues, whether it's city staffing and how we do that and how we recruit to things like the local improvement districts for the sidewalks and streetlights that I mentioned. You know, just focusing on those kinds of things. A lot of people are calling for an inclusivity resolution, which I've had a variety of opinions on that as I've thought through that. You know, part of me thinks, well, you know, they're, they're just words and we need to do something more meaningful. And on the other hand, I understand that words can be powerful and that they can direct the the more practical actions. They can set the foundation for the actions that we want to take. So, you know, if we can't make everybody in Kaiser be nice to everybody else in Kaiser, you know, that, yeah, on an interpersonal level, that's nothing that, nothing that we necessarily have control over, but we absolutely have control over looking at how racism has, what that looks like in our infrastructures and in our way of doing business and how we can ameliorate those, those kinds of things. And so there is definitely a lot we can do, but we definitely will get much further in cooperation with each other and listening to and respecting different people's viewpoints rather than fighting, demanding and, and breaking down other people and their perspectives. So I was really encouraged by last night's meeting to see that we can do this. You know, we can move forward and make Kaiser a welcoming place for all, or at least do everything that we can from a city perspective, you know, and I'm also doing my part in the schools to try and to foster those interpersonal relations as best I can. But you know, bottom line is we just have to be nice. And that's really simplistic. I'm aware of that. But, but when it comes down to it, that's, that's really what it's about. And yet there are some systematic things that we can do to promote, to promote more of a welcoming experience for all. And that's what it is. So, you know, some people are, they see these terms of inclusivity and equity as very loaded terms. And, but the bottom line is that, you know, we need to make Kaiser a welcoming place for all. And I think that that is something that is definitely a goal worth pursuing.
How about you, Mike? Where would you like to see these discussions headed? Are there specific things you would like to address if you were elected to the city council?
Well, I'll start off by saying that for the life of me, I'll never understand how, and Laura alluded to this last night, that when someone hears inclusivity, that they're becoming excluded. It's funny that they don't see the piece of, the reason why people are asking for inclusivity is because they are being the ones excluded. So that being said, I definitely would like to see that resolution written and passed. You know, Laura again said something great last night, that it's, it's a welcome mat essentially to people to say, hey, okay, Kaiser is welcoming to people of different racial, ethnic, gender, identity backgrounds. But, you know, going around as I have earlier this year for, to get on the ballot, I saw a lot of homes that had welcome mats in front of their houses, but then they had the no soliciting sign too. So I knew I wasn't welcome as much as that sign said. So I definitely want to see more action from the city. And we can only do so much in the city. And we, we can only do so much in the city, for sure. We can't change lending practices nationally or even in the state. But we can plant the flag out there and say, hey, this is what Kaiser stands for, and, talk to our sister cities, talk to our legislators and say, hey, there's stuff that we can't do in Kaiser alone. We want to see you take this up too, in the legislature or in the federal senate or house. One thing though, and I guess I push back on what Shane was saying last night about the planning commission, what they can do. You know, housing is a big mechanism for segregation. And with that single-family zoning that we've had for so long, we do put a barrier for people who are either new to this country and might not have the economic means, or are, look just like us and might not have the economic means. And then we build these giant apartment complexes on the edges of town. And so we kind of warehouse them there because we don't want to offend anybody and by building apartments in a neighborhood. And that's why I think one thing we should do is, is support that House Bill 2001 Act that allows us the flexibility in our zoning, and allows us to build diverse, missing middle style housing throughout the city, and gives people a chance to, to find housing that they can afford, to be in a part of town they might want to be in, but they can't afford to. And finally, too, you know, we have to look at, how hard do we make it for people who are not middle-class white folks to get around and do what they need to do every day? And, getting back to development, you know, if we do a development style that forces someone to either have a car that they can't afford, or, or struggle to get places either on a bike, which I do that all the time. I'm not saying that's bad, but, I, I'm probably one of the rare people who will go out on a rough day, but when you see people who are on a bike that's not in a great shape, trying to navigate places like River Road, just to get to shopping or work. Or you see the families walking, especially in South Salem, or South Kaiser, I'm sorry, on River Road. You see the mom with her two kids and you know she's got a harder time to get around. We're telling you then basically that you're not as important, because we wanted our city to look like this, rather than something that might make your life a little easier.
All right. So, Mike, I'm gonna go back to you on this one. One of the things that people have, there's been a kind of quiet-ish group working toward, putting forth a new vision for a Kaiser Public Library, something that offers more services, more rounded than, our Kaiser Community Library, to which I mean, no, no condescension or undercutting of what they've done for 30-plus years or whatever it's been. It's amazing. But, you know, where do you stand on an issue like that, where Kaiser will be stepping into a new realm for, you know, I mean, not a new realm for other cities, but definitely a new realm for Kaiser? How do you think they should approach discussions like that? And what do you think of it?
Yeah, I agree with you that the people who've been running the library for these decades are, I mean, they're superheroes for what they've done. It, from what I've learned about the cost of, of getting, at least of, starting the branch here, it's not such a high financial hurdle for us to have to jump over. Really, it's just a, you know, well, I will say maybe pre-COVID, it might have been a little bit easier to move the money around a little bit, but, we have to make the case to the public that just because you have a high-speed internet in your house, doesn't mean you have access to education, because we all know there's a lot of stuff on the internet that's not educational. And libraries are a great source of educational material, and not just in a, in a classic, school sense, but in just exposing you to things that you might not be, you know, automatically click on. And it also is an opportunity for people who might not be able to afford that high-speed internet in their house, where they can actually get some internet service, and then again, get books to expand their, their horizons. So basically, make that case to the public that if Kaiser wants to, view itself as one that's positive for families and positive for, for a growth, and not necessarily in a, in a physical growth, but in a community growth mindset, then we need a public library.
How about you, Laura?
I think we need to be very careful in our approach of this, mostly because the nature of libraries is changing. It has changed so dramatically just over the last five years. I mean, you look at the McNary Library, for instance, and, you know, there are, yes, books along the edges, but you know, you don't have the stacks of rows like you see, you know, in, in other libraries or so forth. And then you have all of the, you know, and you have, libraries have become all about technology in so many ways, whether it's the computer access or even, books on, audiobooks, or which gives a more, more wide variety of readers opportunities, whether they're, they're audiobooks or digital books or whatever. And so I think we need to be careful as we approach this conversation, to be able to understand that we really know what a library is in our modern age and what we want out of it in a modern age. I know our community library, you know, that is one of the things, I think they have just, just a few computers there, but that is where a lot of people can go to apply for jobs. And, you know, it does, provide a valuable service for the community. And, you know, can we do that? Should we do that on a brighter, on a brighter, broader sense? I think there is a lot to that. You know, if for nothing else, then, you know, as Mike said, the access to internet. You know, all you need is one bad day at home in this current world with your internet, and you miss a whole day of school. And so, you know, in our, in our world, we, we are seeing the digital divide more and more, clearly, as far as people who are able to access the internet and everything it brings and not. And, you know, particularly in this, this educational environment. And so I think that, you know, I would definitely love to see a library, but I frankly am not clear on all the logistics of that. And I don't know that it would be worth pursuing in a situation where, number one, you know, by the time it gets built, will it be obsolete? And number two, with the constraints on our public services that we already have, you know, and admittedly too, there's, a library can be funded a lot in the same way as a fire department in terms of, you know, the districts and so forth. So, that's not necessarily, and the onus is not necessarily on the city for that. But I would need, definitely need a lot more information before I could weigh in definitively on whether or not I would support that.
Kind of in a similar vein, you know, everything is abnormal right now. And Laura, I'll go back to you on this one, just since I did two in a row, had Mike follow up on the last one. So Kaiser Public Works has done a lot with parks recently because of the fee that we've added. However, if we were in normal times, we would actually be approaching another really big conversation when it comes to parks in Kaiser, as far as what's going to happen with Kaiser Little League Park. Right now, we've extended, the city has extended a contract with Kaiser Little League to take, to keep managing the operation for another year. But that was supposed to come up for review, basically, in this time period this year. If the Kaiser can't find somebody else to take care of that, somebody else to manage it, to do all the scheduling, to do all the cleanup and all those sorts of things, is it time for the city to bite the bullet and establish a recreation district to start adding to what's available in parks?
Um, I think that, I, that's a very difficult question to answer in this time where we do have so many other needs in the city. You know, our conversation surrounding Little League was a little disappointing, and then it wasn't as definitive as a lot of people would have liked to have seen. There are definitely a lot of complications to work out there. I, you know, in, I would hate to see, at this point, in the middle of this disaster, as far as COVID and so forth, I think that's a very difficult conversation to have. And I, and I don't really think that, you know, I think that, that right now, we are a little bit more in survival mode, and I know we can't stay there forever. But I think more conversations need to be had on that before we really, go into that, that other level, because that's a whole different pool to swim in. And, you know, right now, we're trying to figure out, and I know that it's not a good thing for the city to try and take management of that as it is now, as, as we are set up now. But, you know, I think that's a conversation for another year, frankly.
I think that's a fair answer. But I wanted to ask the question, because there is a certain constituency that's going to be thinking a lot about it. And so, Mike, the same question to you, you know, you know, there's a lingering hovering conversation out there. What should we be thinking about it right now?
Right, right. Well, I will start off by saying that my knowledge of the ins and outs of the baseball park and what's been going on behind the scenes is limited, only because I don't, I haven't played baseball a long time and my kids don't play baseball, so just what I hear. But, you know, I think this gets back to, while it's great to have a city where you have a lot of volunteerism and a lot of people who step up to do things, things like this park, or even when I, we were members of Pools in town, you end up seeing a few people carry the load of the work. And if they move on and no one carries it, takes that mantle on, then things fall apart. Whereas if you have a professional staff, who's, it's just part of their job to maintain something, in this case, the park, generally, you'll see a better product. So I think Laura is right about, you know, it's tough right now financially to, to say we're gonna have this new, addition to our park system, but it's definitely something that we have to consider. There's, there's only two options really in the long run. We take it, or it's gonna fold eventually, and probably in a shorter span, term than people assume.
All right. Piggybacking on the awkwardness that is our current predicament with a lot of things, and Mike, I'm gonna go back to you on this one. For the, for the time being, COVID's gonna be with us for a while. As a city councillor, what would you do to lead the city? You know, if you're elected in the over, what would you do to lead the city through the coming 12 months to year, depending on what happens next?
Well, first, I'd wear my mask everywhere. And make it clear to people that I support wearing masks in the public, and that there's no question that they're, they're effective. As to, I'm assuming you mean a public health standpoint?
Well, just a leader for the community. I, you know, there's, I hesitate to put too fine a point on it, because the city council can only do so much, right? But, but, you know, there are things, there are examples, there are bars you can set and that sort of stuff is what I'm getting at. Like where, you know, just how would you be a leader for the community?
Yeah. Well, certainly, I would want to hear regularly from the state health officials, and see where they see our numbers are and where they are comfortable with opening, businesses up or schools up, and take their advice. I, I, I think, I don't speak just for myself, that everyone wishes schools were open now. Just because of, it's tougher. We've all learned how, how hard teachers work. Or those of us who weren't our teachers have learned that. But I don't want to get, I don't want to put the cart before the horse in saying, yeah, it's more convenient for me to, to open up, or, or ask things to open up when we don't have this, this virus in check. And so I'd really wait to see the numbers, declining, stabilizing, then declining, and then, you know, when the vaccine gets out, I'd certainly, assuming it's, it's, hasn't been pushed out too fast, that I would put, I'd be one of the first people lining up to get it.
How about you, Laura? I mean, you've had a little bit of experience so far, but, you know, given another 12 months of this, how, how do you think the picture changes as far as leadership goes?
Well, as you say, you know, the city has a very limited function in this, in this situation. You know, it's the county health department, it's the state health department, they're the ones making all the decisions. We certainly can set a good example, you know, as Mike says, in following the precautions that they are putting forth. I think our businesses do a fantastic job of that. You know, I was at the Kaiser Times today. I had to wear a mask. And, you know, I don't like wearing masks, because, you know, nobody likes wearing masks, but, you know, it's what we do as citizens. It's a symbol to say, I care about you to keep you safe. I care about our city to be able to keep you safe. So being able to set the example in that is important. I think on a much more practical sense, to make sure that, our businesses get at least some of, you know, the relief that we are able to procure, whether it's through the CARES Act or whatever, you know, we are reaching out for, for grants for that for the city and that, you know, to make sure that we can, can help the businesses get that as much as we can. I think that's an important role. And even what we've been able to get the businesses so far is not nearly what they need in the long run. It's, you know, it definitely helps, but, businesses are suffering in this kind of a situation. And so whatever we can do to be able to, to help, relieve that in whatever way we can, to make sure that, that money is disseminated, then we should do that. That's one of our roles as a city council, is to make sure that, and the staff is on that, and they're making sure that all of that happens. But, you know, that's an important part, to be able to tap into whatever resources, be aware of the, the relief resources that are available, and to be able to connect our, our people with those resources that they need. Whether it's, you know, posting it on our website, or whether it's, you know, making those available through grants or whatever, we need to be doing that. So I think that's an important role that the city council can play. But also just being in contact, you know, the League of Oregon Cities every Friday has a teleconference call. And, you know, I've tuned into the ones that I can tune into. But even then, our city manager is always tuning into those and gives us, gives us a synopsis of what, what is happening in those calls. So just to be able to stay afloat of what is going on, I think is really important. And to be able to just understand that people are doing the best with the information that they have, and just to be able to get through this as best we can.
Could I just add one more thing? And this is kind of, this is bringing two, two issues that we're dealing with right now to connection. And I haven't heard if we're doing this or anyone around here, but, you know, we've had the wildfires and people who've had to leave their homes. And we've got businesses, especially restaurants, struggling for, you know, to, because they can't have customers coming in. And I think it would have been great if, if at least at the state level, we had some group effort to, to sort of tie in, these restaurants, they could be making food for all these people who are currently homeless. And I think that would have been a great double benefit there.
So, just to let you guys know, I know we've run a little bit over the hour that I'd hoped to get this all done, but I only have two other questions for you, and I hope we can kind of churn through this. The, but piggybacking on what Mike said, and I think I'm gonna go back to Mike on this one. We had the recent scares with the California, I'm sorry, the Canyon wildfires. And, you know, there's a lot of residents who are just uncertain who to turn to, what, what information sources were to go. And even those of us who work in the information industry were having trouble figuring out who we were supposed to be talking to. Given that we've lived through this now, and, and, you know, we do a lot of, the city and organizations in this area do a lot of preparation for the Cascadia, the Cascadia earthquake event. Should we be doing more to prepare our residents for another event like this? And do you think we need to be prioritizing that going forward?
I do, you know, admitting that I only have so much prepared in my own home for, say, the Cascadia or any other, I suppose, disaster. admitting that I only have so much prepared in my own home for say, the Cascadia or any other, I suppose, disaster. But I do see the city has some level of responsibility to take care of its citizens. We expect the government and the local governments, the first one there to provide at least some assistance before FEMA or even the state emergency management folks come here. So I'd like to see us, one, have more resilient infrastructure, getting things out of floodways and not allowing new construction, especially of critical infrastructure in floodways. And also maybe getting some type of, I guess, emergency supply cash that's, that can at least provide the most basic necessities to a city our size. And that wouldn't be cheap and you have to find a place to store that that's safe and we'll make sure that in itself isn't destroyed. But I do see a role for us to be a little more aggressive in how we prepare. Because with climate change and with wildfires, with climate change, we're not going to see the numbers of wildfires going down or their intensity. And the Cascadia event is just going to be one of those crap shoots that are just going to happen eventually. And we can only hope to be as prepared as possible.
How about you, Laura?
Well, we actually had a work session on this, I believe it was last year perhaps. And that featured the 1996 flood. And you know, anybody will tell you that an emergency plan is only good until the emergency happens. And then everything happens differently than you anticipated.
Nobody mentioned the pandemic, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. So, but that does not exonerate us from being able to plan as much as we can. And again, you know, last September is Preparedness Month.
Eons ago.
What's that?
Eons ago.
Yeah, yeah. But so, yeah, this is Disaster Preparedness Month. And one of the practical things that we brought out in city council was to take an inventory of your stuff, whether it's a photo inventory or some kind of inventory. So you know what stuff you have. So when you need to work with insurance companies or whatever, that you are able to do that in an effective way. So, and you know, as Mike alluded to too, a lot of this is sort of starts with individuals and families, you know, because individuals and families could be cut off from the rest of whoever, whether it's a flood, an earthquake or whatever. So it's important to have those plans in place. I know that the fire district and their reader board had something like involve the kids in your emergency plan or something like that recently. And so just to make that, and I know a lot of faith-based organizations are involved in promoting these kinds of things. So it's both an individual thing, but it's also a city thing. Ideally, we'd have a person on staff that was just there for emergency preparedness. And of course, we don't have the resources for that, but we need to be able to establish communication plans, what happens when the cell phones go out or what happens when the power goes out. Or so, you know, we need to, there is a lot that we can do in terms of anticipating some of those, but we do need an emergency plan in place. We do need to work toward that. You know, the one work session that we had on that was a good start, but we need to be able to follow through. And we do need to have some basic plans in place. And you know, because it will still help even when disaster happens. Because yeah, disaster is a disaster by nature.
Right, okay. So this is my last question for both of you and I'm going to be honest, I tried to trip you up a little bit with this. I'm going to go back to Mike on this one. So without using the word pride, spirit or volunteerism, you can't use either one of those three. What are the strengths of the city and how would you hope to build on in the next four years as a city councillor?
Well, I think the people are the strength, even those that aren't doing the V work. But
Watching, I'm watching.
You know, the diversity of people and the, this, I almost said the S word. I know. It allows, the more diverse a community is, I think, the more likely you will get the types of ideas that will make a city both successful, but one that you want to live in. I go back to this a lot. You don't want, monoculture isn't healthy. But when you have a diversity of, in the natural world of plants and animals, it's a healthy ecosystem. When you have a diversity of the types of people from different backgrounds, different economic experiences, that creates a kind of community where, like I said, you'll have the idea generation and the cultural experience that they all provide.
Thank you very much for being patient with me on that. But Laura, the same goes for you, no pride, no spirit, no volunteerism.
And Mike, I'm glad you got that first, so thanks for that. So yeah, our people are very, very much our strength. I want to say, from the very outset, from the very foundation of Kaiser, we've had such devoted people who are devoted to supporting each other, you know, whether it's been original city council members, of which there are still several. We've had excellent mayors over the years and they have, they've all, they've all built on the strengths of Kaiser. And I really appreciate that positive outlook. And I think that also the city staff is amazing in their professionalism. We are so lucky to have every person that we have on staff as far as, okay, so that's a little bit of a generalization. But generally speaking, as far as to my knowledge, we are very lucky to have all the people that we have. All the people that I've worked with on city staff are exemplary. They're excellent at explaining complicated issues and processes and policies and so forth. And they are excellent at being innovative and creative in their problem solving. So we have a city staff that is also exemplary in the state. And so when we work together with our council and the city staff and the various commissions, I think it's a real strong cooperation, a real strong partnership to be able to draw from everybody's professionalism and perspectives and make things happen and to build on the strengths that we have. And to be able to seek out other perspectives and other inputs. And that's part of the creativity in our problem solving. And so there's always things that we can do more, but I think it's really important to be able to acknowledge the strengths and build on those strengths rather than just tear down something and start over. And sometimes that's necessary, but I think in Kaiser, from a city government perspective, I think that we're coming from a strong, strong perspective and that we have a really good foundation to build on and that we have a resiliency from, of different perspectives and on the council. And that's one thing that I really appreciate is, you know, again, our councillors don't agree on everything and yet we can have those positive, respectful, productive conversations. And I respect every single person on the council and I value, and that's been true since I've been on the council, and value their contributions to that decision-making. And so I think that the, you know, the respect that we have amongst each other is really important.
I just want to compliment you both on getting through that without using any of the words from the city motto. I really, I wanted you to hurt, I'm not going to lie. But beyond that, I just want to thank you both for chatting with me this evening. I really, really do appreciate you making time. I'm really hoping that the viewers who are watching this find this helpful as far as when they're making a decision for when it comes to Kaiser City Council Position One. And you've been hearing from Laura Reed, current city councillor and Mike D'Alizzi, the challenger for her seat in November. Thank you both for being here tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
All right.